Oh, these are the old ones?
Yeah. Well, just this one.
Not everybody at once. There's enough to share. Say trick or treat. Now, as you look over those pages, presented those, and these are still going to be fluid. I don't know that we ever get locked down until we get, what is it, the seventeen forty-two or seventeen- seventeen eighty-two.
Plus, we're waiting on local income tax numbers that should come out next week. Right now, I just have those flatlined. It's possible they could go up.
Okay. So, what we're gonna do is just maybe start with these red numbers that we're short on and kind of work our way up. Tentatively, right now, we're showing a net cash flow of three hundred thousand on the general fund, which is, we were showing a three hundred thousand dollar deficit to begin with. So, numbers have changed. We are at the mercy of the state of Indiana. So, if we just go down through here with the starting at the cemetery, we had that budgeted la- last year. Guess we didn't have the, we don't have, or last year's dispersments were.
I have twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-four actual dispersments were twenty-nine thousand nine twenty.
Okay. That one there, we do have a pretty good cash reserve of a hundred thousand. Even though we're deficit spending that, if we go ahead and leave that one the same, we're going to still have quite a goo- quite a good reserve there. Give me one of those pens over there. I screwed up and didn't leave that. So, Paige, do you think we would be safe in just saying, let's leave that?
Yes.
That gives us a little bit of a cushion in case we need to, you know, in case we have a tree fall or something in the cemetery.
I completely agree.
We're gonna leave the budget, leave the same numbers of, leave the thirty-seven five.
Okay.
Gateway maintenance.
Let me explain to them what they have in front of them.
Okay.
So, this right here is the Form Ones that were presented by the department. So, you can put this one aside for right now, because that'd be when we get to them. This copy, the other spreadsheet is taking their Form Ones that they presented. And the only thing I really changed was, they don't mess really with the one hundreds and the, um, the insurance, so three forty-one and three forty-two. But it has all the other funds in it, so when we're talking about all these other funds, they'll be in this spreadsheet, what we submitted to Paige.
In this one?
Yeah.
Okay. And, and we're kinda doing these, these in reverse order, obviously. Is this, will this have the cemetery and all that in it?
Yep.
And they're not numbered, but.
The cemetery, yeah, well. Cemetery should be, so after general, after town hall, then there's L R and S, and then cemetery.
That's all right. So, if you'll find, it, we'll start back there at the cemetery, and you can see what that fund is broken down. Salaries and wages, contractual labor, and the grave digger. Now, the grave digger is a, when we have graves opened and closed, that is a in-and-out type revenue. So, that pretty much covers it, but we do have to pay that sometimes before we collect the revenue. So, that, there's a little extra there. That pays for the mowing. Pay, the next line pays for, we do have a dumpster in there to where the maintenance crew can pick up and throw stuff away as it needs to be, and then we do have lighting in there. Other services and charges, that would be, again, if we have a tree fall or a road that needs work or fill or something like that, not that fill, the other fill. So, that one there, we're gonna kind of leave it the same for now. It does show us a deficit spending at ninety-seven hundred dollars, but it's not, that ninety-seven hundred is, is a cushion more than a fixed cost. So, we're gonna check that one off for now. Gateway maintenance, is that next? And we'll find it.
No, they're not gonna be in the same order. It's the very last, um, next to last.
Next to last page?
Next to last, um, but on the last page.
Last, but last page.
Non-reverting. Okay, next, the general, I see what you mean. Gateway maintenance will be in the general, in the general fund, so probably, let's see, one, two, three, fourth page in. It is its own fund, but it, after the, I- Gateway maintenance is a, is a self-funding at this point in time. It is from the revenues of the billboard and pretty much takes care of itself there. We do show that as the same as, as last year, so let's leave that the same also. Food and beverage is still just an estimate. We want everyone to eat in the town of Mooresville. We have lost one of the major contributors to that. Hopefully, there'll be someone that comes in and picks that up. The estimated, the revenues for twenty twenty-four for Grace Brothers Cafeteria was sixty-six thousand dollars and into the food and beverage fund. So, that was a pretty big hit there. We have a lot of, we have a lot of traffic downtown. Hopefully, we'll see something go back in there and we see some new, some new growth south of Kroger's there. That does have, that does have a very good reserve on it, but the four uses of that are pretty exclusive, and we do, we do fund projects for the park and sewer. We have the clarifier out at the wastewater treatment plant that's going to need some repairs, and this is a source for that, so I think that we need to leave that where it's at also. We can additional appropriate out of that. CCD is a fixed rate. Paige, help, help me out here. Does that CCD, is it going to stay after Senate Bill One? Are we still gonna get the nickel?
Yes, you'll still get the nickel, and as your assessed value goes up, you'll get additional tax dollars. We've flatlined it for purposes of this, because I don't know what your assessed value's gonna be, but you have a lot of capital budgeted out of here, so the fact that your net cash flow is negative is okay, because it's, the capital's pushing it that way.
Okay.
So, that should be fine.
So, again, that's tied right to the assessed value, and you flatlined the assessed value. You did not-
I did not increase the revenue, but it could very well increase. I mean, we've, we've, we're starting to get net assessed values in all over the state, and just as we expected, the growth is really not there because of the changes in Senate Enrolled Act One. So, I don't think your assessed value's gonna go down. I think it's just not gonna grow as it has been growing in the past.
Okay.
Okay. Slowed growth.
So, you're comfortable with leaving that as a deficit spending?
Yeah.
Hume Capital Improvement, CCI, that is the tax on cigarettes. And I, I said to Paige, I thought that the tax was going up on cigarettes, and she said, yes, but the state is keeping that. That we need to do something different with. What do we, what do we show on CCI for? Where's that at?
That's right above CCD.
Right above CCD. That's funny.
You should've just been there.
Third page?
Page three. Very top.
Right there. CCI's right there.
Yeah, the continuation. And we-
No, that's all there is.
That's it. Now, with the CCI, did, did we originally budget that for the website improvement?
Yes.
That was going to come out of that? So, hopefully, that project is, is coming out of that?
Yes, it is.
Okay. So, Paige, do you think we should just match revenue on that?
Um, if, yes, if you think like, let's say fifteen thousand would be enough for what you need to do, then yes, I would match the revenue.
Okay. Now, again, that is revenues that come in off of the cigarette tax. We do have a project, a forty thousand dollar project budgeted out of that. That was our website improvement. While I have a captive audience, I have received notification from C Tuit, who is working on that, and they're not getting the cooperation that they need to finish that job. Each one of the departments needs to jump in and finish what we've started. No one specifically, but it is, we signed a contract a year ago to have this done, and it's not done yet. If, if the shoe were on the other foot, if they were the ones dragging their feet, we would be dragging legal counsel into the, into the conversation. So, if you would, if you think you've already done it, great. Let's keep, thank you very much for completing it. If you haven't, please reach out to check Cromer and see what we need to do to finish this project. Hey, that was on my to-do list today, and that's done. So, we're gonna cut that back to fifteen thousand? Paige, what does that do to us? That gives us a thirty-two thousand dollar cash reserve then?
Yep, you'll have, yes, you'll have a balanced budget and a thirty-two thousand dollar cash reserve.
And that will give us about a two-hundred percent reserve?
Yes.
Burglar alarm permits, that's kind of, you don't know how many, how much revenue. Are we still collecting burglar alarms? I mean, we're still getting some? Okay, so, and if you notice, as, as we paid claims and where they've come out of, our police department is very frugal with that money, so thank you for that. We'll just leave it at the way it is? I don't know that I can say that about the rest of the fund. Riverboat? What are you seeing as far as dispersments on them? Do you think that they're gonna go up? Do you think they're gonna go down? There was, there was rumors that they were gonna go away?
So, right now, it's still in the statute that you will get that thirty-three million that they've cut off the tab and distribute to municipalities. That's still there. So, we're gonna assume that's gonna continue, and technically, you have a balanced budget, because you have ninety thousand that's, um, that's budgeted for capital expenses, which, which is fine. You can use your reserves-
One time.
For capital, yeah. So, I know it's showing out of balance, but that's because you've got ninety thousand in capital. So, I would deem that to be okay.
Okay. And that can be used for any general fund purpose?
Any purpose.
We've been using it if our community crossing grant matches more than we're able to fund out of, and be it restricted.
I know they're, they've not done that yet, but one of the, one of the glimmers of hope for us is because of our population, we should see our portion of that community crossings grant drop from twenty-five percent down to twenty percent. So, there is a little glimmer of hope there.
And did, I don't remember, did I, I talk about the Pacer ratings, like the road ratings here, if they're at least a six this year? Then you only have to restrict forty percent of your motor vehicle highway?
Okay, ours are six four seven, is that correct? Six point four, ours are six point four.
And then no more than fifteen percent of your roads are in failed condition? Okay, well, then, starting July first, twenty twenty-six, you only have to restrict forty percent. That helps your non-restricted piece.
Okay.
But I did not build that into this, because it's a half a ye- it's kinda weird-
Yeah.
They're doing a half a year, but I just thought I'd bring that up, so.
Okay.
So, would that be the dispersment that we receive in July, or?
So, starting July first, yes, when you get the distribution, the revenue, you would put forty percent into the restricted and then sixty percent in non-restricted.
Okay, so we'll leave that one, like you said, it's one-time purchases, so we should be all right there. Lit Public Safety, you said you don't know, you, we don't know our income.
Right, we're patiently waiting. The DLGF has what they need to calculate that, and they're supposed to do it by the end of next week. So, like, any, any day, I just checked this morning, and they don't have the numbers yet, but any day, they should have it. No later than next Friday. So, for this purposes of today, I just flatlined it based on what you're getting now. And so, this one, I mean, you are, you are utilizing two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of cash reserves, and I didn't see any capital in this budget. So, this one, we would recommend that you make some reductions. So, I mean, you've got a little bit of room in, in general, if you wanted to move some of those expenses to general. I don't know what the line item detail is, or I can look at it.
Pinch checks mostly.
Oh, is it? Okay.
And, um-
That, that, it's a little bit of a worry, because we're ma- you know, this is gonna go away at the end of twenty-seven. Um, I did update your lit numbers for twenty twenty-eight. They look a little bit better. We had a meeting with the State House and talked to the analysts to see how they were, um, computing that, those lit, and they were way, I think they're way too aggressive, so we're somewhere in the middle. So, I can't remember what number I gave you last time, but starting in twenty twenty-eight now, we have, we've updated it to three point five billion? I think I might've gave you two point seven? But again, these are all kinda up in the air, and that doesn't start till twenty twenty-eight. That's still less than what you're getting in all three local income taxes.
Yeah, if, if what you're saying up here, the three hundred thousand is a cash flow, what we could do is we can move some of the police and fire insurance, health insurance, up into the general fund. And then that would, that would lower that.
What I did was split them fifty-fifty?
Uh-huh.
Sell eleven officers and like send in firefighters out, or take, and eleven officers, sell firefighters out, general, vice versa. So-
Okay.
We can just decide how many we wanna move to do, or we, we do set them to first.
And I don't know how the rest of the council feels. I mean, obviously, when it comes to these budgets, we're, we're gonna pay the salaries, we're gonna pay the pensions, and we're gonna pay the benefits. And then the rest of it, we'll have to work out. I mean, I think those are gonna be fixed expenses that we just can't get away from and, and don't wanna get away from. We're gonna keep those at the, at the top of the, at the top of the list. And this fund here, the, the public safety is doing exactly what they want it to do. We're only funding public safety with it, but we're funding the pensions and the insurance, the benefits out of it. We've raised the dispersments how much for this year? Do what else? Okay. What does a hundred-
That was that health insurance number-
That, that's all right.
Talked about.
That, so if we take a hundred and sixty-eight thousand from the one million one thirty-three, what, what does that give us for, for dispersments there?
Be the nine sixty-five, that's the difference from last year to this year.
Nine sixty-five. That was the only difference? I thought you, I thought there was, I thought you raised the pensions in there also.
I did. We, there's a little bit of a reduction in the air cards, and then we didn't, I didn't have any equipment that I knew of this time.
Okay, but the pensions at six, six sixteen is correct?
Yep, based on the, based on the salaries that we use for this purpose and what the certified salaries would be, that's twenty-three thirty-three percent.
Oh, that's the, that's the other thing that Debbie informed us is, the towns portion, the taxpayer portion of the police and fire pension i- is going up to twenty-three percent. Does it, does the employee fi- does the employees' part go up?
No.
Okay.
It's still six percent.
Six percent. So, now that pension, you know, that started at one point in time, it's twenty-six percent, is now twenty-nine, thirty percent total, cumulative. Okay.
So, that one's going up twenty-three percent?
It's going up to twenty-three percent. It's at twenty-one now?
Yeah.
So, it's going up another two percent?
Okay, so, if we take six and, six, three firefighters and three police out there and move that to their budgets, that'll take care of a hundred and sixty-eight thousand.
Okay. Okay, so-
If they can fund that from their budget.
Well, we, if, if we have a reserve of, of three hundred thousand-
Yeah.
Then, then we just need to do that. Do you understand what we're saying there? Because we're, because we're definite, deficit spending that public safety LOIT, the, what we're gonna do is we're gonna take three of the policemen and three of the firemen out of the LOIT as far as their pinch, or, no, sorry, as far as their health insurance, and we're gonna move that into your budget. So, you're gonna see a big bump in your health insurance. But we're gonna fund it right now, hopefully through that three hundred thousand dollars that we're, that Paige is promising us. Okay, so, twenty-eight times three is ninety?
Eighty-four.
Eighty-four. So, we're gonna do eighty-four.
And the police, and eighty-four and the fire.
Eighty-four, five, police. Okay, council, do you see what we're talking about there? If you, if you go to the public safety LOIT, you got it? If we go to the public safety LOIT, um, look at those line items. On the seventy-seven pension, we're going from budgeting this year five hundred and twenty-five thousand to budgeting six hundred and sixteen thousand. That is because of the estimated or hopeful increase in pay, and then also the increase in the contribution that the town has to make on that. So, that we're leaving the same. Down at the health insurance, we're going to take away a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars.
Makes it three thirty-six.
No, yeah, we're gonna take, we're gonna take away a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. There is a deficit in there of seven thousand dollars, and that is the air cards that we have been paying for, collecting, going back and forth on that.
What's the new total for the insurance?
Three thirty-six.
Pardon?
Yes.
Three thirty-six?
Three thirty-six.
And is that going, that is going to give us the total of?
Nine sixty-five?
Exactly the same. And what are we showing revenues at? But that could change with incomes, correct? Paige?
Yes, I mean, we could have additional revenue-
Okay.
Through the income. We just don't know yet.
Okay. So, if we change that.
That'll be the day we're taking three thirty-six.
Two thirty-six.
Three thirty-six. Taking three, three of them there.
That makes our deficit spending eighty-five, four sixty.
Yes, that's correct.
So, that would put our ending cash balance?
It'd be three thirty-six. Three thirty-six. Eighty-seven. Three on the number to the police. To the police.
Are you getting that at eight thirty-eight, eight fifty-four?
Yes.
Eighty-six, eighty-six point nine reserve?
Yes. I don't really need to be here.
Yes, you do. I need, yes, you do.
So, what does that move it down to?
That'll move the dispersments, if we look on the LOIT on this page, on this here, that'll move the dispersments to nine sixty, nine hundred and sixty-five thousand. That will give us an estimated ending cash balance of eight hundred and thirty-eight thousand, eight hundred and fifty-four dollars. We will be deficit spending that account eighty-five thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars. And that'll give us a cash reserve of eighty-six point nine percent. Any questions? Law enforcement, continuing education. We always let Carrie worry about that, and, and I'm sure he'll under, he knows what he's doing there. I've never been too concerned about that one. Emergency medical services, those are kind of cash in, cash out, I believe, from the revenues of the- Emergency medical services, uh, those are kind of cash in, cash out, I believe, from the, uh, revenues of the, paramedic services. So that, even though it shows a, uh, four hundred dollar, uh, increase, the price of gauze may go up, who knows? Non-reverting building permits. You know, our town is, it, we, not getting the permits from the buffer zones, uh, buffering zones, we, uh, we're not seeing quite the revenues that we saw before. We moved some of the salaries for, uh, both Brian and Julie out of that into, um, into the MVH to try to shore up the MVH. Right now, we see the MVH is, uh, a balanced budget. Is that, is that wha- what you're seeing it? Paige?
Um, I, so what we did is, maybe I should've started off by saying this, because you had a, a surplus in general, we shifted property tax from general to MVH and park to balance it.
Okay.
Don't wanna do that, that's fine, but I felt like there was enough that I could just, that's why it's perfectly balanced.
Okay. Okay. If, c- can we still, I, I, I know I'm spending that three hundred thousand, I know I've already spent a million two out of that three hundred thousand reserve, but we're, we're moving a hundred and sixty-eight thousand for the police and fire. Can we move some out of the, um, non-reverting building permits? Just to try to, to shore up those, and, and those will go back into, uh, the salaries for Julie. It would still be shifting levy out of the general into MVH, but do you think that we have enough to, enough room to do that?
So you wanna put them in general, is that what you're saying?
No, I'm wanting to shift the levy from general to MVH.
Yeah, yeah, you've got room to shift probably about a hundred and some thousand dollars of levy if you need to. So just let me know how much, and then I can see what it looks like. Cause when I move levy, also auto excise moves with it, so I can't give you a definite, but it looks like about a hundred thousand you could shift.
That's what I'm thinking. Yeah. I mean-
There's just not a lot of revenue coming in that non-reverting building permits. I even annualized what you got through June thirtieth, and it's just not, there's just-
Well, the, the county took back the, the buffer zone, the non-jurisdictional area, so we used to get the building permits from that. That's why I'm wanting to move, that's why I'm wanting to clear that back into-
The long-term plan should be to move it, yes. So you wanna try to move a hundred thousand, or what, how much salaries do you think you need to move?
Brian, I know we were gonna pay that last paving bid out of your salary, do you have any more of your salary you feel like you can give up? Give up a hundred thousand of it?
Yeah, it'd be a hundred, well, what about zoning zoning, do you wanna lean that in there?
Yes.
Okay. So about a hundred and twenty-two thousand.
One twenty-two, three ten.
One twenty-two, three ten, okay, I'll miss if I can make that up.
We just spent three hundred thousand dollars and didn't even blink an eye.
Yeah, I knew it was too good to be true, I just-
Yes. Can you collect it? What do you think?
Sounds good.
But if we leave, if we leave, take that out of there, our excise will go down?
Yes, but-
Oh, wait a minute, hold on, I think I did my math wrong.
Okay.
Yeah, that shouldn't happen. Shouldn't be. They're making a lot of money. No, well, that's all the, that's, no, it was right. That's the longevity, the part of the health insurance.
Or then, that's everything.
Half their salaries.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, it's half longevity, half health insurance, half total.
Okay.
Okay, so, I added a hundred and twenty-two thousand, three ten to motor vehicle highways.
Okay.
I shifted levy, so now general fund is, is better than balanced by nine thousand, one twenty-six. Motor vehicle highways, better than balanced by nine forty-eight, so they're basically balanced.
Okay.
And park is still balanced.
Where do we put the cars last year?
You can see that there.
Did you, did we do that?
Last year?
Cause we bought them all last year, I don't know if we- Did you take it out of there this, did we take it out of there this year?
I didn't know there was gonna be any, so, no.
Okay, so that was in other capital outlays. Okay.
I figured we talked about that earlier, but I didn't know.
Well, we already rolled right through there. But that, but it is in there for that. Yeah, we're good. We talked about that. Okay, so where does that put us on that, uh, non-reverting building permits?
So now it's out of balance by a hundred and sixty-six thousand, three fifty-one. The new budget is two hundred and twenty-five thousand, is that what you have? Two twenty-five? I mean, there's still a strong cash reserve there, as long as you know-
That red one, that red top one. That's what mine is left here, I can have it, but not next. So we're gonna go two twenty-five on it?
I think so. That's what I have, two twenty-five.
Yep.
Yeah.
That is, that is a non-reverting building permits, planning and zoning, going to two twenty-five, what's that give us for a reserve?
It gives you two hundred and forty-one thousand, seven twenty, which is about a hundred and seven percent cash reserve. So I mean, that's a good cash reserve, as long as you know that probably in the future you'll have to ship some more of, uh, out. I mean, I think it's okay to, to, you know.
I mean, that other service is in the park, I don't even really know what that's being used.
Oh, yeah, I was gonna ask you about that, two hundred thousand of other ser- yeah, I was gonna ask about that because, yeah.
On, on what? On what?
Uh, non-reverting building.
Okay.
Cause there was a good, a big balance in there.
Paige, what'd you say, two twenty?
Two twenty-five, two hundred and twenty-five thousand's the new budget? For a non-reverting building?
Interesting.
And I added the credit card fees, cause there wasn't a line item, huh? We have a list.
Let me see what you wrote down, I wrote down my two twenty-five. So that-
I'll, I'll draw the out, I'll draw that one. Um, is that building? Come out one? Um, a hundred and sixty-six thousand, three fifty-one. But I mean, you have some strong cash reserves, I just think you need to, if you don't make any further changes today, just know in the back of your mind that you're probably gonna have to move more later.
Okay.
Do you wanna change the number? Make it look prettier?
No, no, because it, on, on that there, let's see here, planning. So we're taking the, so we still have in there other charges, we still have that two hundred thousand dollars building, that's fine, that'll give us, that'll give us an opportunity to move that. Cause we have to use that for that, or can that be used for any general fund? What, what can that be used for?
Only for-
The billing, okay.
That particular fund.
Okay, yep.
You know, I don't know what you're using it for, inspections?
Okay, that'll work. Let's just leave it at, let's leave it at dispersments at two twenty-five.
Two hundred.
Two hundred and twenty-five.
Oh, yeah, two, two twenty.
Total, yes.
Yeah. So are you marking that on this here, on these, cause I'm not, I've screwed that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Well, I'm changing them
Oh, okay.
on that as we go.
Okay.
So I can give you all the-
Park non-reverting. That's you, Phil, what do you, what are you seeing on that, because we're really jumping that one up. Do you think you're gonna have more revenues, and we just don't reflect it there, or what?
Yes, so, uh, Parks is, uh, working on solution four, increasing, um, actual registration for our summer camps, which will increase our revenues. Uh, that's basically breaking into our pricing scale, we operate through summer camps right now, one at a different package deal, one at all at one. So we're looking at doing both, uh, package deal options, which will increase our attendance. We saw that where we averaged a hundred and five kids at one camp with those three-tier options for payments, versus we averaged about fifty-five at the other camp at full cost. Uh, so we're looking at that as potentially another fifty kids registered into our program. Uh, the other, uh, with that does incur more staffing costs with that. But we are looking at, uh, generating more, uh, recreation activities and programs. Uh, we're forecasting similar, uh, to what Paige has, uh, created. Uh, one of the things to, uh, calculate is we do have that sixty-six thousand dollar capital improvement in there. If we remove that, we're in a fifty-two thousand dollar deficit, uh, compared to before. So that is part of the project that is currently in our, budget for this year. Uh, we're just looking at timeframe for the park improvement project, if we move forward with that maybe now, or do we wait till project's completion, uh, before we, uh, seal coat the road and parking lots in the park? So that's, that's kind of where we're at, or if we have to push that to next year.
So since that's a non-reverting fund, so w- we, he doesn't have to encumber it, i- if he doesn't spend it this year, if it's in there, you're, if it's in this year's budget, it just rolls over into that?
Well, he has to encumber it if he wants to spend it next year, if he doesn't spend it this year, he still has to encumber it, the money stays in the fund.
Budget for it.
Yeah, budget, or budget for it, yeah.
We're just looking at timeframe. We also have other things that have came to light very recently, uh, that we will be seeking assistance financially with. Um, one is a piece of equipment, but other is capital improvements. Um, some of the things that are actually beneficial to the park, uh, one of which a property owner approached us yesterday morning, um, interested in selling that is located near Pioneer Park. We're going through the process of the appraisal right now, don't have numbers yet, since it just started yesterday morning. I already have one appraisal meeting with the property owner today, so I'm trying to move as quickly as possible. The other is with the data center, um, project out in Moravia. We have, um, currently been identified as the beneficiaries of a local family farm's whole barn. Um, that is a forty-eight by eighty, uh, barn, which we're working with our current construction firm, Myron Agum, of working out the pricing of that. That could offset the need for the maintenance facility being built at a later date, where this would actually provide more square footage than what we were looking at building a new building. But at this time, I don't have any of those figures, my team is working as digitally as possible. Um, but the building itself, when we looked at a brand-new facility, it was about one, one point three, uh, complete, finished. We are looking at where we've been told that it'll be a fraction of that cost to be able to bring this, uh, onto site and join it with our current maintenance facility, so we're still working through those problems, but there will be, um, a time and I'd be against myself if I didn't say that today, um, that there may be some financial components that will absolutely help improve and leapstart, um, our park's, um, maintenance and also just general operations, uh, in the light years ahead. This beneficiary, um, is a great opportunity. It launches us straight into phase two, uh, which we weren't looking at until about two years from now. Um, actually potentially being able to operate that, so number, that window is significantly shortened. Uh, but we're just, numbers aren't at my grasp right now. Uh, I will have the bare benon, uh, bottom of just deconstruction, the site, and moving it to Pioneer Park to store. I will have that figure hopefully in the next couple days, but, uh, the other options of actually building it and connecting it, I don't have the, so. Long story short, there's, there's other things, other needs that will be approaching at a later date, and plenty of notice to the council, uh, before that happens.
Okay. Paige, I don't, I, I don't see a problem with this here, especially with, uh, some of it being capital outlays, and, and some of the revenue is, is contingent upon whether it's spent this year or next year.
Yeah, I, I don't see a problem with that.
And we stay on top where if our revenues are, if our spending, our expenses, we don't spend. So, and right now, our, our revenue did increase over the summer, we did see it, the spike from last year, so. It's half the stress, but we still had a really good, good summer, so.
Okay. Edit, or economic development income? Again, this is going to be in- Again, this is going to be income-driven and we don't know numbers there, correct?
Correct, we don't have the final numbers yet. I mean, it's really not that far out of bounds.
Yeah. I say we leave it for now? Council good with that? Okay. Park operating. Okay, now that we're getting into park and MBH, uh, these numbers are based on making sure that we're covered on the insurance. We didn't see much of a growth on insurance, but we did shift some insurance around while we had a pretty good budget for one-time expenses. So now we gotta get those back in there. Uh, and four percen- was this figured on four percent or three percent? Three? Okay. I know you and I talked about, uh, three percent, uh, cost of living. You know, AIM puts out the, or I guess it's AIM, the, the one that all the, and, and I'm sure all you council members get it, you know, someone asks, asks a question, hey, what do you do about abandoned vehicles? And everyone chimes in. And, and Carrie and I had a conversation that someone had put on there, what are you doing about pay raises? And it's, it's averaging either three percent or zero. And, and I'm not a, I'm not a fan of zero. Well, I am, but hate to admit it. Uh, but the three, this is budgeting three percent. Now, the other side of it is, and, and I'm gonna count on you two, uh, because not only is it a three percent increase in income there, it's also a two percent increase on, like I said, the pensions are going up. So, so they are getting a little bit of an increase there also, i- if they acknowledge that. I don't know whether they will or not, but it is a cost to the taxpayers of two percent going up on, on the town's contribution to the pension. So there is a little bit of a bump there. And that's, that's outside of anyone's control. But hopefully it keeps the nineteen seventy-seven pension solvent and paying for a bunch of people that are already drawing it. Is that you? No, you're on the chairs. Questions or comments? Jordan, do you wanna ask us a question?
No, not yet.
No, not yet. Park operating, uh, did you have anything in there that, that is overwhelming, that is something new, or is this just treading water, making sure that we're staying afloat?
We, uh, with what we have previously made was in the one, uh, we'll get potential, I did a deep dive with my staff and we tried to come to the general fund as the approach of this may need to be sustained for the next several years. Um, so we tried to come to that level. Um, this is what you see before you. Um, there were a couple of capital outlays, uh, new lawnmower, um, but we can look at a different approach. Uh, but that, that is just to keep with our rolling cycle of, uh, equipment recycling, because that piece of equipment does have a three-year, um, cycle. So with next year would be our start of the final year. So looking at potentially adding a new mower to just keep that three-year of warranty, uh, rolling on our equipment. But, uh, other than that, um, I believe I had a capital outlay for, uh, capital, um, consulting fees to look at forecasting for the park improvements, uh, setting master plans for our other five parks, our other four parks. Um, to look at how we can better improve our services, uh, and amenities for our community. But other than that, this is what you see before you, is what we see as, um, hopefully sustainable over the foreseeable future. Um, when I presented our form once, I had our, uh, full-time salary increases at zero, um, because I did not know what had been discussed, so I kept that at that level. I also kept the longevity, cause I think it was three for the discount, um, stating.
I changed, I mean, I.
Yeah, I saw the increase in there.
I got the longevity.
Yep.
It should be spot on on everybody.
Yeah, so I think we have three staff.
So if you.
Well, everybody will go up.
Well, yeah.
The way, with the new schedule, yeah.
The, uh.
So there's about thirty thousand in capital, uh, those that I had laid out in there, but that's all contingent.
And I changed your, uh, I, I did have to raise your, um, liability interest, which I, we just paid that bill. And, um, most of the departments were still under budgeted in that area. And so I made some adjustments on everybody's for that. It just keeps going up.
Hey, we got rid of the zip line, so that was.
And you wanted it, didn't you?
I wanted it, yeah.
Hey, you could've took the scrap metal, the way they took that down.
Okay, so if you look at the, the park and, the park and rec, uh, budget, it is up, um, not quite ten percent. Uh, it's up about ninety thousand dollars, uh, on a one point one million dollar budget. Now, it does show, uh, balance and, and that just, that just boggled my mind, because I know we deficit spent it last year. And Paige did inform us that, hey, look what I did here. I moved some of the levy. So you took away, the park took away from the general fund. She moved that from there to get that to, to budget line item, or to a balance line item. Um, so it, it did go up. And, and we did, you know, the old expression, rob Peter to pay Paul. Uh, it did, it did come out of the general fund to be able to do that. So that's, that's what we're doing. We get so much levy and that's, that's all we get, so we have to move it, move it around. We're taking it away from, we haven't, we haven't flipped a coin yet to see if we're taking away from the police or fire. Who do you use the most for your services up there, police or fire?
Dominantation. Honestly, and with every event that we are adding, uh, both are on site, so.
Well, I just, you know, I just wanna make sure that it, it's crystal clear and, and that you understand, the public understands, that we are, we are trying to make everything work. But i- it's, it's no different than a household budget. You know, if you wanna buy something here, you gotta kinda give up something there. So yours is up, uh, about ninety thousand dollars. Uh, there's no real cuts in it, uh, from what you su- from what you supplied to us. It does leave that thirty thousand, and I think you got it broke down into different capital improvements.
Yes.
Paige, are you good with it?
Yes, I mean, so I just saw the capital. I, I, either I didn't have it coded correctly, or maybe it was coded as other services and charges in there. But I, I do have the capital now. I mean, I could shift thirty thousand dollars of property tax away from park back to general and let him use the reserves for that thirty thousand of capital. Whatever your preference is, but I'm, I'm good with his budget as it is, yes. I didn't realize he had capital, but I do see that now. I, I probably had it miscoded as other services.
Okay.
Oh, I know what happened. There wasn't anything coded there. That's what it was. Okay. No, I got it fixed, so.
Okay.
And the fifteen was basically a year mark, um, because we don't know what the fee will be for consulting.
Yeah. Right, right.
To give us those kinda plans, um, we're looking at for the councils awareness, our North Park, uh, or Run Park. Uh, we're looking at our aquatic center as a whole, um, our splash beds specifically, and then other amenities in Pioneer Park for improvement, like our baseball fields, our soccer, um, to better improve our youth services. So those are kinda the, the areas of what we're gonna be focusing on. Our, my board is still working on, uh, the tier system of which ones we focus on first to, to next.
So it's up to the council if we, we can come back to that thirty thousand, uh, cause you could spend, you could spend that out of your non-reverting also, I assume. But let's leave it as is today, or right now. The MBH highway restricted, um, that can only be used for, uh, direct, uh, repairs and improvements on the current roads. Can't be used for any salaries, can't be used for, uh, anything other than that. Last night, when we talked about the additional paving, uh, we can use that, that is part of our roadway system. We just can't, we just can't do the alleys with the community crossings matching grant. Uh, we had budgeted last year, uh, two hundred thousand dollars, we're budgeting the same amount this year. When they start in on the, uh, when they start in on the, uh, community crossings grant applications again, I don't know whether, if it'll be considered a fall of twenty twenty-five. I don't know whether we will be at that point in time. I don't know when that twenty versus twenty-five percent starts.
Yeah, I don't know.
So I don't know, you know, I don't know where, where we'll be there. Uh, and I don't know that we've ever really discussed it. The bridge on Carlisle Street, um, we did get an engineering report back on that. Uh, they didn't see it as a public safety issue, but it is something that needs to be done, needs to be addressed. Uh, we can use, uh, we could use this money for that. Uh, however, what, what I think Brian was, I think if I got your train of thought correctly, when we do that, depending on the number of the passer scale on Carlisle Street, at least doing that portion of it, putting it in on the, uh, community crossings matching grant and see if we can get, you know, a portion of that paid through that grant. Um, and then, and, and possibly do all of that. I think the preliminary estimates were a hundred and eighty and two hundred and fifty thousand dollars just on that bridge.
Repair, repair, oh, repair compared to replacement.
Yeah. So, uh, the good news is we're not gonna have to shut the bridge down. They've already went in there, Brian, you said they went in there and, and filled those holes, you know, didn't have a problem with that. Uh, but it is something that needs to be on our radar and we'll put that on the, on the, um, community crossings matching grant. Again, that passer scale came from, uh, University of Wisconsin-Madison. Uh, they came up with how we rate those roads. And that will be detrimental to that rating. That bridge would be detrimental to that rating, so I think it will fall into that category very well.
I know we also mentioned, Brian had mentioned, when Main Street's done, to focus on those alleys at the same time as Ma- when Main Street's completed. Some of those are gonna need some.
Well, I, that's why, if they did Main Street, I'd like to see the alleys off of Main Street done, but I mean, that, that's for the, uh, Main Street project. I think all that's already been read out.
Well, that, yeah, but the alley, alleys would be us, separate. So I just know that was something you were looking into possibly too later down the road.
Other one was, what, twelve thousand dollars and it was a hundred and fifty feet?
Yeah.
So nine hundred dollars a foot?
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I don't know if we'll just have that.
Ninety dollars, nine, nine hundred dollars, yeah. So ninety dollars. I guess we need to figure out if we're gonna budget that, but that is a project of next year.
Right, right, yeah.
Yeah, Main Street bid should be released on August eighteenth.
Yeah.
They had to move, uh, from a end dot line, uh, being released, so.
Okay, so Josh, your comment on that, are you wanting to try to figure out how to fund those, or do we just need him to kinda get an estimate on pricing?
I know, I know the one one's definitely gonna need. Is that the one on the?
Uh, between Washington and Main.
Yeah, that one will definitely need done, but.
The thing is, what I'd like to see is when they do Main Street, at least do the alleys off of Main Street to kinda coordinate, give me a look at the ice and everything like that.
Since it's downtown.
Instead of, you know, going from a nice, you know.
So how many feet of, how many feet of alleys is that?
I'll have to check on that. I have really don't know all around, I think it's gonna be quite a bit.
Quite a bit, so it'll cost a lot.
Yeah. I don't know if they'll have to be resurfaced, or it just have to be.
Some of them, probably, there's pretty, uh, uh, good alleys that need to be really worked out, smart. You know, I don't have to all tie it by home, but, uh, for them to build it down and everything like that, it's gonna be quite expensive.
When's the Main Street supposed to be done?
Next year sometime.
It's, uh, twenty twenty-six.
So it'll be done by twenty-six?
By Main Street, yeah. Well, not by twenty-six, by the end of twenty-six.
So did, if, if you discussed this with Josh, did you put anything in your budget for this?
I guess. I just talked about, uh,
Let's go.
What I'd like to see at least done, when they did it, uh, the Main Street project, uh, is just a top off my head. I mean, really get the little, uh, numbers together, anything like that. People from Third Road Street all the way to the railroad tracks on Main, there's some alleys in there really need to be tended to.
And I think if I remember right, we should be doing them back to the, ba- past the right of way.
Yeah, most of it.
Yeah, and then, then finish them.
Do you think there's a way that we can get a, uh, and, and I understand that it is, you know, every job is different and unique, but do you think that there's a way you can, uh, just talk to the, to the different asphalt companies? Maybe the, the same companies that bid on, uh, the community crossings matching grant, so you'll have names and contacts of all those people, uh, and say, you know, we're just trying to do some preliminary budgeting. You know, is there a, on a, and I don't know what those alleys are, what are they, sixteen feet wide? Uh, you know, on a, on a.
Twelve feet.
Get an average, you know, on a sixteen-foot wide, uh, alley, uh, to mill inch and a half off and, and put a top coat on it. Can we come up with maybe a price per foot? And then you get us some, some lineal fee, footage on, on these alleys and come back and say, hey, this is twenty-eight million dollars to do this. Or, you know, something like that. Then we're gonna have to probably look at other, other funding mechanisms to, to try to get this. I don't know that LRNS or the, the restricted, or I guess we could, you know, possibly, uh, pass up maybe one year, not do a community crossings matching grant and just dedicate that year to paving alleys.
Yeah, that's, that's what I did too.
Okay. So the restricted, we're, we're budgeting it at two hundred thousand dollars. The community crossings matching grant, they have said in the past that, uh, they, they are going to go up to, and I think this last time, they're going to go up to one point five million dollars as a, a total project. We've always kinda backed away from that, just because we didn't have the, the, uh, twenty-five percent of, of one point five. We've always felt, like she said, with the, uh, extra riverboat money, that we could cover the, uh, twenty-five percent of a million dollars. Uh, the two hundred thousand, if, if the project goes through next year, if a project will go through next year and we're at the twenty percent, this covers us up to a million dollars. LRNS, Paige, help me out here. That is, that money comes through, through, uh, tax, uh, plate revenue?
Uh, it's gas tax.
Gas tax, okay.
Mm-hmm. And I think this is where, like, mi- mostly the budget is materials. Like road materials?
Mm-hmm.
So, I mean, they've got reserves that they can cover the, the shortfall. I mean, at some point, if, if the gas tax doesn't come in enough to cover, you know, the budget, they'll have to reduce the materials.
Okay.
You know. It's not like it's salaries and wages or anything like that.
Right. And, and, you know, we sometimes, and I don't know, uh, Brian, how are we on salt and sand this year? So we can get it out to park? Is that where we can get it?
That's where we're starting, I think.
Salt Mine, too. We got a salt mine.
It's Salt Mine. No.
I kept talking about the alleyways.
Oh, okay. So, salt and sand, we got full buildings and?
We're able to play the pool on that. We've got four big pens, both are reporters for next year. We're able to play the pool on that, we've got four big tons of load for quarters for next year.
Okay. So with the LRNS, that, that should be, that should be sufficient, like you said, it leaves us a, a hundred and twenty percent reserve. Motor vehicle highway, that's the one that you've already changed, can you give us the new numbers on that?
Yeah, I sure can, so the new budget is one million, three eighty-one, four thirty-five. So, one million, three eight one, four thirty-five. It is, the budget is balanced right now, because I allocated enough levy to balance it, so. We're expecting an ending cash balance of six hundred and eighty-six thousand, four ninety-six, with about a fifty percent cash reserve.
Did you make those changes in the line items?
The budget is one million, three eight one, four thirty-five. And that does not include restricted.
You, you moved one hundred and twenty-two thousand, three hundred and ten.
Yeah.
Okay.
My, the number I just said does not include restricted.
Right.
Okay, okay. I moved one twenty-two, three ten.
So you moved that out of general?
I moved it from the non-reverting building permits fund.
Okay.
But the levy, yes, I moved from general to MBH.
Yeah, let me see here. Cause I'm, I changed them by line item, so you can make sure.
I just don't want some change?
Yeah, I figured, just wanted to make sure.
Paige, you haven't fun yet?
Oh, I haven't had fun, I look forward to this every year.
Mark it on your calendar.
Yep, I couldn't wait, I couldn't sleep last night, cause I couldn't wait to come down here.
How many other towns do you have that much fun?
Not very many, I have fun in Ellisville sometimes.
Sometimes. Couldn't sleep last night.
No, the excitement was just overwhelming.
I'm surprised you haven't moved here. How was the night out? He said it was, he said it was good.
It was, for our first time, we actually had quite a few people show up, had a helicopter out there, did dog demonstration. I took like a hundred and sixty hot dogs. I got some hot dog water down there if you wanted.
Hot dog water? Sell it. Sell it to the sheriff, sell it to the sheriff for his commissary.
Yeah, it turned out really good.
Any idea, any idea at all how many people went through?
All for being the first time, but, yeah. State police sent three.
Three? I didn't know they, I didn't know I had three in Morgan County.
Conservation sent two.
Fantastic.
Yeah.
It's a national deal, isn't it?
Yeah, so it's the same night every, and everybody, like, in Indy, we go on the bad night, we just walk the streets and stuff like that.
You got bad alleys, oh, you're talking about paper.
Oh, bad alleys, you know, and we don't pave our alleys in Indianapolis.
One, three, eight, one, four, three.
You don't pave your, pave your streets in Indianapolis.
Yeah, they don't pave their streets either, yeah, but yeah, it turned out really good, Ballard did a really good job, he did the whole, I mean, he took, took the reins and did the whole thing himself. And we had a lot of support from the community and almost enough thank you letters, so, yeah, it was a good time.
It's good.
The hot dogs were cold.
Do what?
The hot dogs, he said the hot dogs were cold, but you ate them anyway.
They weren't done.
And we had popcorn, Chevy gave us their popcorn machine because we had a popcorn machine, somebody donated, it was two twenty, we couldn't figure out how to get it.
Pops it past.
That's a pop, yeah, but they had popcorn machine, they let us use and, uh. You got waters, did you get, donate it or were you donating? Oh, they did, they were donating to us. Yeah, they had the fire and fire eyes out there and we, you know, Chevy gave us a pickup truck to use for the dog demonstrations, brand new pickup truck. Tried to get them all his keys, but.
Just forgot to give them the keys back.
Sorry, yeah, a lot of people.
Good, good, so what'd you figure out?
We're good. I, I had the wrong code and health insurance, but.
Okay. There you go. So, so MBH is balanced.
Yes.
Still gives us a good reserve.
Yes.
And we're ready to go, okay. Now we're gonna go to the general. So we'll just go down through here, uh, town hall. Anne, what are you seeing here that, that you've done or not done?
I haven't, I don't see anything, I did, um, increase our AES electric bill, cause we're doing a two-tier rate increase, it hasn't been approved yet, but. I'll just take place, but other than that, it's only been that we've had a renewed service contract. And reduced our subscriptions and dues by, um, five thousand. We did increase our consulting, consulting services by ten thousand, as we were getting in the negative, uh, in July.
Paige said something about not charging us, I don't remember what it was, what was it you said about?
I'm actually pretty expensive, I can send somebody else down.
And we also rejected the, um. Waste management increase as well, but other than that.
Paige was all too enthusiastic about sending somebody else.
No. I kind of.
What do you mean?
Oh, there it is at the top, never mind. Totals aren't in the rate, um, okay, I see it now. It's better than twenty-two thousand. Increase. Twenty-five, so. I think we cut it to the bones.
Cut it to the bone there. Okay, we've done all the others. Law enforcement, uh, you know, we got to the, oh, I did kinda brush through that continuing ad, you, you've always taken care of that, you're, you're, you're satisfied with it, I assume, yeah. Didn't really say, hey, what do you think about that? And, and the burglar alarm permits and everything, you know, every now and then I see a bill go through there where you've earmarked it what you wanna pay it out of and. And we kinda count on you to keep track of all that.
Yeah, I try to, you know.
Fantastic, okay. Police department. I, I, I have to ask because I don't, the operations support liaison, what is that?
That's, that was Darlene's old spot, Kevin does that now, he does a multitude of things, he writes grants, tries to find us money. He takes care of a lot of Freedom of Information Act requests, and he also helps with the FTOs, the property room, he does a lot of things.
Popcorn?
He does pop popcorn, he and Rose pop popcorn out there, they were the popcorn poppers, so, uh.
Can you not get him to wear the big cushy?
No, I couldn't get him to do that. So, uh, the, the increases that I show here, obviously I talked to you about the three percent, I just went off an estimated three percent COLA for next year. I did have a significant raise in our part-time communication officer. So, uh, because we have our own dispatch, it's only budgeted for four dispatchers, which is bare bones basically. And we've been using the part-timers to fill in on the busy nights because they do dispatch, police fire and EMS, and when we have a big situation, one dispatcher down there just doesn't cut it. We have a busy night on the weekends, uh, we've been using part-timers and I'm below. What I tried to do, I do is figure in my, on my June, uh, report, and we're below fifty percent quite a bit. And so I try to figure out, I looked at the last two years budgets and we were at least fifty percent or more, and so I figured. We needed to probably raise that just a little bit to make sure that we can staff that dispatch center. And then the only other increases that, that is just from cleaning, maintenance and the contracts, and I talked to you about that, they all gave me about a five percent-ish raise. And I didn't know about the trash collection, if Diane had talked to them and see if they were gonna raise their rates or not, so.
Paige, I wanna, I wanna ask you one thing here, just, and, and I'm looking long-term. Would there be any, any reason to take all of our dispatch and shift it over to Loewit? Take that money from Loewit, put it back into here since we're paying pensions from it. That way, if the day goes away, that, uh, we would lose our dispatch. The cost of it doesn't come out of our general fund.
If you would lose your dispatch?
Yes, if, if, if it came down to it to where we had to close, you know, I mean, I'm looking at one point seven million dollars. So I know that Debbie files a paper that says this is how much we're spending out of our general.
So are you asking if, would it benefit to move those dispatchers over to Loewit? I'm trying to think of a benefit of doing that, I mean.
It's all right.
I don't think it really matters either one, I mean, when Loewit Public Safety goes away, that's when there should be a concern, but. It's, everything's gonna have to condense down to general anyway, do you see what I mean, so.
I, I would like, and maybe this isn't a forum for this, but it would be nice if I could go through this budget and makes, and change the line items, because. We paid dispatch this out of this thing, it's not related to dispatch, we paid for the contracts out of this thing. It'd be nice just to have a dispatch line items where I can keep track of, how much money am I spending on dispatch? How much money am I spending on law enforcement? We kinda just move the chess pieces around and get it paid for.
You saw us do that.
Yeah, yeah, and, you know, just like you stuck a note on my, that new system I have to track, uh, training and policies and stuff. I plan on paying, I, I had them, uh, give me a, a bill for just the rest of the year, and then I plan on encumbering funds from this year to pay for that, just like I do flock cameras. And then, um, I try to do as much as I can with what I have, but it would be really nice, I mean, some of these line items don't really even apply.
Easily add a dispatch line item, you would just need to let us know like what you.
Move money?
Wanna take it.
Yeah.
How much you wanna start out with.
Yeah, maybe not this year, but working on next year.
This is in ha, this, this is in the house, right?
Right, you can also create a dispatch department, so you could have a police department within the general fund and a dispatch department within the general fund. And then have different line items within that dispatch department.
As long. You still have to oversee them.
Yeah, as long as I don't, as long as I don't go outside of my allotted budget, I can move these things, because to me it's easier to track, I try to. I mean, I'm all the time, where are you gonna take this out of, where are you gonna take this out of?
This would be the time to do it for twenty twenty-six, because we could create that department in gateway, or if you just wanna do individual line items, you could do that as well, but. That's easy to do, very easy to do.
Dispatch expenses, you know, um, I think for me, it's easier for me, instead of trying to keep track of where this money's coming from. And when I go through the bills, I try to keep track of what fund is being paid out of, because some of the stuff was being paid out of funds that shouldn't have been paid out of, so, we've got that, a lot of that rectified, but.
It's easier to track expenses too, because if somebody asked me, well, what has Mooresville spent on dispatch, I would have to start sifting through line items, I don't think I could figure that out.
Sure, make that piece out, uh, report.
Yeah, and I don't know if we get the nine-one-one funds from the county, I, I know there was some kind of. Talk when I got here about that we weren't getting the nine-one-one funds we should have been getting, or.
We are getting, well, well, what they said is we're gonna start paying the bills for you, is what, is, is.
We'll, we'll manage your money for you, sir, we, we got you, we're here, we're with the government and we're here to help.
There you go.
Yeah, okay.
So, now would be the time for you to, to do those, because that is all an in-house type thing, so if you say, hey, this is. Don't put slush fund on there, but.
Oh, no, no, miscellaneous.
Miscellaneous, yeah, and, and keep in mind, that's, that's your purview, because, you know, when, when you retire, the next chief may say, no, I, I want, I wanna do, I wanna do it this way.
Yeah.
So, yeah, that's, this is the time to say that.
It's just better for me, it's, I keep a spreadsheet tracking my budget throughout, you know, throughout the year to see where I'm at, opposed to the last couple of years that I was here. And it's just easier if I could just have it all.
As long as the money stays the same.
Yeah.
You know, you can add as many line items as you want for dispatch.
Okay. Or if I could just do a spreadsheet and send it to you and see what you think.
Just make sure that you, um, know where you're moving it from, you know.
Yes, like, I mean, I could say for instance, I wanna split my office supplies into dispatch office supplies and operational office supplies.
Where she, you know, and then how much you're moving to a dispatch office.
Yeah, okay.
I know that sometime on your planes, there's training for the dispatchers and there's training for the police, you may wanna keep that the same.
Consolidated.
Here, just because you don't, I know those kinda vary on you.
Yeah, and so the new program that I got that tracks policy, cause it, we send the policy out, the officers actually have to say, hey, I read this.
Yeah, do something.
In the past, they gave them a binder, it's like, okay, yeah, I read it, um, and then on the training, it actually tracks training costs. Per section, per year, that way we can kinda keep track of, of where our money's going. that way we can kinda keep track of, of where our money's going, so we can adjust fire on that, so.
That's good, that's why I asked, I didn't know what that was.
Yeah, but I, instead of putting on that little B sticky note, I just thought it'd be easier to talk to you.
Are you wanting to go so far as to separate out like their overtime, their longevity?
Yeah, because here's the thing, if I.
Their pay is separated right now, but their, but their benefits and their, you know, um, their perp and their longevity.
Yeah, because their perp's different, is it the same amount of money? Civilian perf versus perf seventy-seven, is the town's paying different or is it same?
The, the civilian perf, we pay eleven percent versus the twenty-three.
Okay.
Well, we pay fourteen point two because we cover the employees' three percent.
And, not that I'm suggesting this, but say that one day down the road that you guys decide, hey, we're gonna merge, we're just gonna send everything up on the hill, does that money stay with us or does it go with them?
That, that was my question to her, because I, I was always told that the, if it was out of the general fund, it went south. Uh, if, if, if we said, hey, we're not spending anything out of the general fund, then that money didn't move. That's why I asked if we needed to move it to Lit.
So, I guess it depends on what's happening at the county level, are they, would they be increasing their levy to cover the dispatches?
See, that's, that's, that's what I don't know, the, the way that I've, like, when, when the dispatches were given up throughout the state.
They were able to keep their levies.
They were able to, because it, because that levy should go away from ours, but if it's not coming out of our levy.
Yes. Right.
That's why I didn't know if we could move it to, all of it to Lit.
And, I mean, is there some talk that that's going to happen, or?
There's always talk, nothing's off the table when you tell me I gotta cut one point seven million dollars out of the, out of the budget, you know, the, uh.
Because, I mean, they would have to do that in twenty-six and twenty-seven, like, if they did it in twenty-eight, it's coming out of your general fund regardless of whether you want it to or not. So, I don't know how quickly they're talking about this, and.
Oh, no, that, that is a decision that would be made at this table.
Oh, at this table, oh, oh, well then.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cause we moved it out of moving ours down there.
But there was a, there was actually a buy-in, from what I understand, cause I obviously wasn't here, but there was a buy-in when they did merge, that a certain amount of money you had to pay in.
Well, that was just, that was just, you were going to give them the money that, that came out, that came out of your levy, uh, you were gonna give that to them because taxes are paid in arrears, so the next year that they, then they would get it.
I got you.
And that's what I'm saying, if we say, well, we're only spending a dollar out of our levy, you can have it, well, I'll give you two, uh, again, we're moving, we're moving.
And it probably makes sense to track it also, but at least I would know.
But the county could, I mean, if I were the county, I'd say, well, then I want your, I want that public safety lit that you've been using, and keep that, and have them keep it, cause that, the county can decide how much public safety lit is PSAP, which is dispatch.
Which we would ma- probably maintain our PSAP as a secondary, our backup PSAP, so that would put a, throw a little sand in the gears there, so I don't, you know, I have no idea. I'm not suggesting that we're gonna do that.
No, I'm not either, I'm not either, I still think we have a great, a great dispatch, and I think it's, it's run well and, and overseen well.
Yeah.
But I'm also, one point seven million dollars, where, where are we gonna, where, where do we cut that?
So, did anybody have any questions for me online?
How soon can you get that all figured out?
Right after I get on my website thing that Tom said I needed to do.
See, I did wanna.
I just had a lot of stuff going on.
I did wanna call you out on it, you could've said, I've already.
Yeah, I'll take it. I take responsibility, it's me, I give that to Kevin.
There you go, but, you know, I, I, I'm gonna say this, and, and all due respect to you, Kevin's been here forever, uh, Kevin may have a better feel for, for what to do there, and it, and that's his job is to lighten your load, so.
Yep, absolutely.
I think that would be fantastic.
John's already maxed out, he can't.
Do what?
John's already maxed out, he can't do anymore. He's cleaning the popcorn machine right now.
The two-twenty, did you tell him to unplug it?
Yeah, I told him to unplug it, yeah.
Okay.
Alright.
So, did we move the eighty-four thousand dollars into that?
Yes.
Okay, and, and you have that in there, okay, so. Just, just for grins here, what are you showing your, uh, disbursements at on the general or as of right now?
I have six million eight seventy-two three nineteen.
Three nineteen? Six million eight seventy-two three nineteen, and that gives us a cash reserve of?
A hundred percent, so six point nine million.
Good there, cause we may need that in a couple of years. We did, a- a- and that's a conversation, like you said, for another day, so at the park, that's where they do all that, the, the, the police department is run by the park department now? And then they pop popcorn there?
Oh, matter of fact, we, the parks department asked for a police department's help, I used employees that we don't pay anything.
Attaboy, attaboy.
I use reserves.
Do they know how to set off fireworks?
They're older guys, so, I'm just saying.
I'm just saying, uh, the, the, the vehicles, you asked me about them, and we did leave that in the CCD, so.
Oh, that was, what is the?
Well, we try to get those numbers, because, you know, we're not going to cut that, but, uh, basically what we've had before, you know, the, the one eighty-five, we did bump it to capital outlays, to like two hundred thousand, but don't spend that yet, just yet, because we will take the other revenues that you get off the cars, uh, that you're selling and, and pull into that.
So, I've contacted, well, Chevrolet contacted me and asked me how many vehicles I want, and I said, what's the price, and they said, we don't know, pretend like you have a unlimited amount of money, and that, you know, order what you want, and I said, and then if we don't, if you don't take them, we'll sum somebody else, which they do. And I asked them, did you, do you still have twenty-fives, and they had a ton of twenty-fives I could get for a lesser price, but I'm gonna check with Ford as well and see what they have. But I'm trying to go off of what the, so the county, uh, their guy that does their fleet, he goes out to the ILEA and sees the performance and looks at who's having problems with what, and so he has a better grasp on what's gonna be, I mean, as we know, cheaper isn't always the best way to go, buy once, cry once type deal, cause you're just gonna end up fixing them. So, I tried to get a good sturdy vehicle, and so I'm, that's why I'm kinda spreading out, staying away from Dodge, obviously, but, um, yeah. The Fords and the Chevys, I'm trying to figure out if they have old, like the twenty-fives that they could sell, maybe it costs a little less money, so.
Yeah, i- if you would, maybe, we, we can do, we'll do that at the council meeting, but you had asked me that and I wanted to give you an answer for that.
Okay.
Okay?
That'd give me an idea of where to go.
Well, we, and we may have to give one of those vehicles to the fire department.
I've got four more, so that's, the four that I'm selling are getting, you know, and then I've got four more that I need to go through, but one's got a transmission problem, so. But I've got a couple twenty-twenty's that are over a hundred thousand already. That's why I'm saying, we, we're just getting a few vehicles at a time, it's hard to get caught up, so.
I have a question for you, I noticed that you didn't change the overtime budget, and so I left it alone to, do you foresee that going down? Because you were at forty-five percent on June thirtieth, and with salaries going up, normally we raise overtime unless you think that your overtime's gonna go down.
Well, I didn't, yeah, I didn't think about that, I would probably, if whatever, I would say whatever were given for our raise, we should use that percentage for the overtime as well, just so we can cover it. But I looked over, like I said, I looked over the last two year, three years budgets, and we're, yeah, we're right there, um, and then in the winter months, the overtime kinda gets, goes down a little bit, but.
And you have more offices now, so I didn't know if that would.
Well, we still have one opening, and that's another thing, I mean, we've had at least one opening the entire year, so that money's gonna go right back in the general, um, and then we've got one potentially leaving, so that'll give us two openings, so, but then you have to go back to physicals and all that stuff that you're paying in uniforms and it's a never-ending process, seems like.
So, that's something we didn't change, so.
So. I would, yeah. What's that, the overtime? I'm sure.
Let, let's see how this flushes out as far as, I know we've moved, uh, hundred and. No, two hundred and, two hundred and ninety thousand out there, of course, when we move it out of the general, or when we, uh, when we moved it. Now, that sh- that shouldn't have changed it, just a hundred and twenty-two thousand. Are you showing the, uh, disbursements as balanced?
Yes, better than balanced by ten thousand.
By ten thousand?
Yeah.
Okay, so, the overtime, will three percen- will ten percent cover three, I don't know, what, what is his overtime budget?
It's a hundred and ten right now.
Yeah, one-ten, I love that.
So, so, we could put five thousand of that, ten thousand in there.
And that was another thing, like on, I look at police equipment, you know, I don't know how many vehicles I'm getting. So what I use that police equipment for is for fixing police equipment, because I budget in the equipment that goes on the new cars out of the money you give me for new cars. So I don't just take that money and just buy cars with them, I've gotta outfit them too, so. Cause, yeah, uh, emergency equipment, fifteen thousand, it's not, I mean, it's ten, ten thousand a car to set those things up.
Yeah, well, it is about fifteen thousand as well.
Yeah, give or take, depends on what we're gonna put on them and stuff, so, and we did, we've done away with some of the equipment that cost us more money to try to save a little bit of money, but.
I, as one fifth of the board, I, I, I would like to see decals on them, I'm just telling you.
I only have one that doesn't have decals, yeah.
Saying that, uh, that's, that's probably, a- and I guess maybe it's a good thing, that's the only negative comment that I've had in the last nine months about the police department, and that's, that's saying a lot right there. Cause people gotta find something to pick on, but I.
Oh, yeah, just get on Mooresville chat, you.
No.
Yeah, two point, but yeah, so, like I told you, generally, in all departments that I know of, lieutenants are allowed to have unmarked vehicles. It's just been a type of, Plainfield lets their sergeants have them, um, I thought it was, you know, whatever, but, alright.
So, are you gonna move five thousand into his overtime, okay?
Now, it's better than balanced by five thousand two hundred and eight dollars.
Okay. Fire department. Looks like you've made some changes, I noticed your capital improvements there, uh, the hundred thousand for the turnout gear, um, kind of explain that if you would.
So, we do have fire gear that's going out of date, September of next year, and, uh, we're gonna need a plan on replacing that, I did see that in the previous capital improvement plans that we had, that there was allocated coming up for thirty thousand, but I also don't wanna come up to you every year asking you for gear as well, so that hundred thousand dollars for turnout gear would be outfitting the department and thus not coming back for a while. So that way, we were all on the track, so that way we could, as a whole, go, okay, we need to look at this again in seven years to get more, and not every year or two coming back for you and piecemealing it all together. Roughly looking, I have a couple of quotes, but it's roughly about three thousand dollars just for a coat and a pair of pants, that's not counting boots, helmets, nomaxes, or anything like that.
And, and what actually is, is outdated? You, you said they're, they're going out of, out of date.
So, per, excuse me, per NFPA, and I realize that we're not in NFPA state, we're in OSHA state, um, the gear is no longer in use after ten years, it says it's done.
The gear, what, tell me, is that boots, pants, underwear?
That's, that's everything, everything.
Everything.
Ten years, gloves, helmets, even though the helmets are plastic, or not plastic.
You put, you put, you buy it today, you put it on the shelf, and, and you never, and you never wear it, you're gonna say, throw it away.
And if you never were to use it. Absol- that's, that's what they say. I can't argue that point, especially when they say, well, for OSHA, we're not NFPA, and then somebody gets hurt in gear that is expired per NFPA, and OSHA goes, well, we're gonna invite our friend in, NFPA, NFPA says, good practices, ten years.
Good practice, but, but again.
And that's what they're gonna get us on.
Yeah. Well, they're gonna get us one way or the other, I, I mean, it's a danger, it's a dangerous operation.
So, I'm.
A- and you said you were gonna check, do, do any of the companies sell leases, do it on lease?
The turnout gear?
Yes.
Yes, I can get them on a lease.
Okay, and.
Five-year lease, three-year lease, whatever we choose to do.
Oh, you said they're, they're good for ten years, is that right?
Good for ten years, I, I was looking at doing a five-year lease.
What's a ten-year lease on a hundred thousand dollars? Okay, and how much is a five-year lease on a hundred thousand dollars?
I'm still waiting on prices for those, for the, what the interest would be.
Do you, do you see leasing it gonna be cheaper, or do you have an idea?
I think it wouldn't be as big of a financial hit to the town of trying to fund, obviously not just my department, but every department, but a hundred thousand dollars instantly right up front. I think it would be okay that with a five-year lease, we could keep it ongoing, and just know that it's, we'll say, twenty thousand dollars a year is what we're paying for the fire gear. And to make sure everybody is in, in compliance with the date of their gear, and we're good to go, I think it would be okay.
How soon do you think you're having?
I should be hearing back, I, I have all the quotes for at least the gear wise of the total cost of how much it would be, and then the only thing they couldn't factor in was, depending on what you guys said was, if you said a hundred grand's not, is too much, we could do eighty, there's a difference, we could probably get, uh, three percent off, depending on the amount of sets of fire gear that we get, but without knowing a number that you guys were okay with, I couldn't pick a number to get. And roughly, that was a hundred grand's thirty-five sets, thirty-four sets of fire gear. And I have twenty-one sets going out in September of next year. And then after that, there's ten sets, and then the year after that, there's another fifteen sets, so that's why I'm trying to get.
Next three years, we're, we're.
It's.
It's all gonna be done.
So that's why I'm trying to get it all lumped together, I know I have twenty-six, eighteen, and I think nineteen or twenty, those are when everything's finally done, is by twenty. So that would be thirty for us. That's why we could all be on one plan that we could forecast going, okay, here's where it's at.
Wait a minute, when you say you have them going off eighteen, bottom, eighteen, nineteen, and twenty?
So, most of the. Sixteen, eighteen, and then it's e- it's either nineteen or twenty. But it's all a different amount of fire sets of gear, uh, numbers, so like, the biggest set I have coming up is next year, it's over twenty sets of gear.
Sets of gear, and this hundred thousand buys all of them, how many, how many sets of gear?
That's thirty-five sets.
That's thirty-five sets, but that's, that's not boots and underwear and suspenders?
No.
Okay.
But if you look at my line items in here, that I would still have equipment that I could pull it out of, uh, PPE, that I could fund the other half of it. Unless we just wanted to make it all one lease purchase, then I can add to it.
Have you seen any, anything out there for grants that are available, I know we've bought SCBA's before on grants, do you see, is there, are the grants available for, uh, protective clothing?
So, yes, but we don't qualify.
Why don't we qualify?
Twelve years.
Twelve years, what do you mean twelve years?
Um, the great writer I talked to said, because our gear wasn't already expired, that they wouldn't look at it, we, there was no, his exact words was, I, I'm not gonna waste your money, I'm only going after things I know will get, and we won't get that. Because the gear wasn't old enough in their eyes.
So the federal government is recognizing that twelve years is an acceptable use for them?
Well, it would be a guaranteed yes. And not a fifty-fifty shot.
Okay, well, we're gonna have to figure out what we're gonna do. But I don't see anywhere in your line items where you can cut a hundred thousand dollars out of your budget.
As for all the other line items, it was just, we're seeing increases everywhere. But I tried to just, if I couldn't increase it or didn't increase it, or just a very little increase, the biggest flip-flop I have compared to. What I presented compared to what you have is longevity. Is up to fifty-one thousand, and I submitted thirty-one thousand, being that we had two retirements that were getting the max. And moving that up to my overtime, since I'm already well into the negatives in my overtime.
Did you count how many years of experience you have there? And what is it?
From what we lost?
No, from what you have now.
From what I have now, yes, I added the seventy-five hundred that each one of them would get, so.
So he did that, good catch. So.
Figured out how much additional they needed. But I wasn't thinking about that they lost two of the.
And you had already put that, had you already put that into, is your request on overtime for one hundred and eight? One hundred and eight thousand?
Yes. Cause I moved the twenty thousand that we wouldn't be spending, because those two guys that retired, that were maxed out. I just moved it over and re-appropriated it into longevity being. The way our overtime's paid out, it's not.
So you took twenty thousand dollars out of longevity and added twenty-three thousand dollars to overtime? So you'd already added some to overtime?
Four percent, I had already added four percent.
Okay, okay.
Correct. Good catch.
Okay, let's. Let's create, Paige, how would you feel about this? Of course, this is going to be a capital outlay for three years. How about if we put a line item in there, protective clothing lease, and move twenty-five thousand dollars into that? Because right now, we can cut out of the one that she gave us, the one that Debbie gave us. Which that's the one, that's one you're using, correct? If we put, start a line item that says protective clothing lease, that keeps him from buying other things with it. Keeps the department from buying other things with it. It is a three-year capital outlay, but we're gonna take twenty thousand dollars out of longevity. If we move that twenty thousand dollars down and add that, add the five thousand dollars that you said we had left in our slush fund. That'll, that'll give us a line item for a lease payment. Now. Obviously. What we probably need to look at is, is how many, how many pieces of protective clothing can we buy? Or what is the price per unit leasing it? So in other words, if they say, hey, it's three thousand dollars and a three-year lease on it is a thousand dollars, or eleven hundred dollars a year. Get that broke down, and then we'll see what that twenty-five thousand. Obviously, don't call, don't call them and say, hey, I got twenty-five thousand dollars, what'd I get for this? Let's just, let's break it down piecemeal and see what it is. And see how many we can get started on. Now, if that rolls over, I hate to obligate it longer than a three-year lease because of Senate Bill One. I think we're gonna see a lot of things shake out of this, but I can't guarantee that. And Paige, do you think we should, we would be good for at least three years?
Oh yeah.
Okay. Just because the police department buys Escalade, you do not have to buy the top of the line?
I mean, my thoughts on things were, if he wants to get Chevy fifteen hundreds, we can get Chevy fifteen hundreds. But. I was fine with doing maybe a Chevy Colorado instead.
Well, he was, we were talking, and he thinks he's gonna look at them Chevy Bolts, this little, or that Mercedes. That Mercedes, the Smart, what was that, what was that little car that Mercedes made? Smart car. He's thinking about getting one of those.
The biggest thing with the vehicles, I've obviously seen it in the capital improvement fund and all that, but. We talk about cancer particulates and everything, and we're literally putting our fire gear in the cars that we have, in the age of our cars. And so needing to switch from an SUV to a pickup truck would be beneficial for the cars that we have across the street. And the only other thing you see on there is the fire truck. That's the last thing.
Right.
That's, that's the most expensive thing.
Overheated.
It overheated, it did.
Okay.
It was the operator, I think.
Are there any questions for the four department heads that are here?
So we're creating a twenty-five thousand line item.
Debbie is, as we speak. But it can be used for the lease payments for that. Paige, are you good with that?
Yeah, your budget is better than balanced by two hundred and eight dollars.
Don't everybody rush to it?
Two hundred and eight dollars up for grabs.
But we could see an increase in that.
Yes, you could. We, yeah, we're still waiting for the.
Got two more, you might get some more.
Yeah, really? Okay, you know, years ago, we would, we would put a little bit, build a little bit into the four hundred numbers as well. And then we can make a, we can make a cut in it.
Yeah.
Could we create a line item in the town hall budget to do?
You've got plenty of reserves. So if you spend it, fine, if you don't, fine.
Well, and I'm thinking, the only way we spend it is if it comes back to, hey, you're gonna get an extra hundred thousand dollars in income tax. What do you think a viable number would be? I know we're being very conservative here, but gut feeling, can we, could we put a capital improvement in the town hall for a hundred thousand? You think a hundred thousand?
I think that's a good choice.
Do you understand what we're saying there?
No, I.
Okay. All of these budgets are built off of, all of these budgets are built off of conservative estimate farm. And zero growth on the income, zero growth on the income side of certified shares, if you will. So used to, we would, we would build up the four hundred numbers, and the clerk treasurer had the authorization. She would go down and sit in front of the state board of accounts, and they'd say, hey, you're over by two hundred thousand dollars. And she'd say, okay, take this line item here out. And they don't do that anymore. They just, they just approve it, and if you're over and you go broke, you go broke. So what I asked her was, could we put a capital improvement line in the general town hall of one hundred thousand dollars? And that way, if for some reason we would get the income tax, an increase in the income tax. We would have that money to spend. If we don't get it, we don't get it. And do you think a hundred thousand is?
I think that's reasonable.
Okay. Now we're overspending.
Now you're overspending, yeah. Or overbudgeting.
Okay, council, do you understand what we just did there? What, all these numbers are based off of known facts on assessed value. But estimates, there are no estimates on growth in income, the certified shares that we get. So what we're going to do is, we're going to build in a capital improvement or a capital expense in the town hall budget of one hundred thousand dollars. Now, just because it's in there, that doesn't mean that we're gonna give Debbie a raise. Debbie does not get a raise. What we're going to do is, we'll have that to spend if, and if an emergency comes up in any one of the departments, we'll have that money to spend, and it'll be allocated. No, no paper, rock, scissors. Look, he's on Amazon right now as we speak. A cage fight in the octagon.
So that'll be available for any department that has, like.
Yeah, but only one time. They can't, they can't all spend a hundred thousand dollars.
And the departments have to be within the general, right?
Uh.
No, not necessarily for anything. Well, the appropriation is coming from general, but you can use it for any.
Yeah.
Any.
Are you alright?
If they break a pickleball paddle, then they can replace it on that.
There you go.
Yes, I'm fine with that.
So you're going to, we're gonna do these numbers here, you're gonna print those out, see how they look. And then, are we gonna submit this on gateway as our preliminary budget?
Yeah, we've already got some of it in gateway, so yep, we're gonna all run with this and make sure this gets into gateway. And you can still make changes all the way through adoption. Lower, you can go lower, you can't go higher.
Can we put a million dollars in that capital improvement? No, I'm.
You can.
I can.
You can.
So we have up to September the twelfth, we put the budget on.
I think, let me see, we're in. You are having your public hearing on October first, so really you have all the way until September twentieth or twenty-first to make any changes, because we have to submit the budget form three, which is, used to be the advertisement. We have to submit that ten days before October first.
Okay.
Right, yeah, October first is the correct date of your public hearing, correct? I have October first, and then I have adoption October fifteenth.
Probably need to have a revised schedule, because it's, I'm looking at the one that was created.
Maybe we don't have to write dates. Maybe we don't have the right date. Okay, well, let's compare.
October first is a Wednesday, so that can't be right.
Okay, well, the dates aren't. So when, what did that say, that calendar say? I mean, if you're good with these dates, we'll go with these dates. I don't know where these dates came from. Um, so. October seventh is the public hearing. And the adoption is October twenty-first, October seventh. So you have until September twenty-sixth, well, before, I'd say, you have until September twenty-fifth to make any changes to the budget. But you could even make changes after that date, but it would have to be lower. You can't go high.
Right.
Where do we have it?
Yeah, one more question for you.
That's on third, fourth page, wasn't it?
Okay. On CCD. We have some vehicles that we are selling. We have deemed them surplus and we're selling them. They were bought and paid for out of CCD.
Okay.
So the revenue will have to go back into there. Do we have to budget that revenue to be spent out of there?
If you want to spend it, yes, you'll have to.
Okay, it may look like deficit spending, but can we, can we put a line item in CCD and. And it would only be if those came in, police department expenses or police vehicle expenses? Because he's gonna have money that'll come in, and what we'd like to do is take those and either put them towards outfitting the vehicles or towards equipping, or paying for the vehicles. But it would only be if it came in.
Yeah, you can budget that. So do we wanna add a line item then? Do we have a kind of a rough estimate?
Yeah, probably fifty thousand. Can we, you think we would be safe saying fifty, do you think the next four would be another?
Probably, yeah, I'd cut it to the first four, the thirty, so, yeah.
You think we'll be safe there? Close?
And what about the, so I have some other equipment that's not vehicles, and I don't know whether it was paid, it was probably paid just out of budget, that we don't use anymore that I'm gonna sell.
It goes right back into the general.
But who, I guess you just have to determine what it's paid for in the first place?
If we don't know that it was paid for, and usually the vehicles were paid for out of CCD, that's the only reason I know that. If, if, you know, if it was. I don't know, a computer or something like that, I'm gonna say it probably just came out of your general fund budget. The clerk treasurer's office would probably know that.
And then we'll auction off the stuff out of the property room.
We don't know what fund it came out of, and it defaults to the general.
Property that's abandoned?
You know, property that's been in our property room for years, and after a certain amount of time, we can sell it at auction.
So it wasn't our money?
No, so that just goes back into the general well, or is it?
Now, what was it again?
Yeah.
Well, so we have firearms and other stuff that, you know, we've accumulated over the years. And after a certain amount of time, then we sell it at auction, and that money goes back to the police department, general fund, or where's that go?
I mean, since there's no identifiable fund, it should go back to the general fund. Now, once it's in the general fund, the town can decide what you wanna use it for, the police department, fire department.
Do we have to show it, show it money in and money out, or?
Oh, ask for the money.
It'd be revenue, it'd just be sale of assets.
Ask for an additional appropriation out of the general.
And it just would come in as revenue, and then.
But is it, is that tracked? Say, in the general fund, you say, the police department put this much money, it's like money from tickets and all that stuff, does, no?
Well, I mean, it depends on what type of revenue is, but revenue just comes into the general fund. If it's a specific type and you're coding it as tickets or something like that, that's the only way we can track it. We don't, revenue is not coded by department.
I gotcha.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
But if you sell your stuff and you make five thousand dollars, and that goes into the general fund, and, but you know you sold it for five thousand dollars. You could additional appropriate that for your use, because it was technically money you.
Alright, we're gonna have to rub some next week.
And you could also create a separate fund. I know you don't want additional funds, but you have, you can have a separate fund.
Forfeiture of assets, I've seen that, and.
We do have a drug, it's a drug fund, it's.
Oh, okay.
So we could put it right back into that, since he's in the general fund. There we go.
Yeah, you could.
But then forfeiture money, by law, is only, you're only able to spend it for certain things.
Okay, well, then if that's the case, then you'd have to keep it separated, so general fund.
Could he set up a non-adverting to handle situations like this?
You can set up any fund, thank you.
They, it's the police department.
I know.
They will not hold on to that money.
It's not making interest.
Okay, well, I think, I think on that there, uh, unless you think you have, I know I heard on the news where one police department made a thirteen million dollar drug bust. Are you selling drugs?
No.
Okay.
I've been known to bring in some money. We just got twelve thousand dollar.
Okay, well, I, I think if, I think if you, if you sell something and let us know, we'll just additional appropriate it. So that, that puts, that kinda changes that CCD fund then, doesn't it? So on paper, we're gonna be at four hundred and eighty thousand.
Yes.
And they're gonna recognize that as a cash balance of two hundred and fifty, seven forty-seven. And we're only gonna spend that if, if we get it, correct?
What's that?
We're only gonna spend it if we get it, right?
The sale of the cars.
Oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
So what does that, that gives us a, uh, ending cash balance of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So what's that give us? About a fifty, about a?
Fifty-two percent cash reserve.
Okay. Questions or comments? Paige, do you have anything that you see that we need to address?
No.
Oh, yeah, what, the court we came down on though, didn't we, because of the key court, but we moved it.
Raised their, uh, no, we raised their insurance a little bit and she needed more, uh, supplies. So it's up by sixty-six hundred dollars, but.
But we're covering it. What, what page is it on? Where, where is it? Did it be for fire? For police? He's an acrobatic word.
I'm just finding the one that says judicial service.
Courts.
We got Keystone?
No, Key, Key Court is no more.
Oh, okay.
Um, and the state, um, gave them Odyssey.
Oh, I've heard about it.
Yeah, so they were able to take seven thousand dollars out of the budget if they can spend it in Key Court.
I don't find it, do you?
I thought I saw it.
You judicial hers too.
Judicial is what it's, did you find it?
She gave me hers.
I think it was, I thought it was the second page, right after.
I don't see it either.
What?
I think she, I don't think she gave it to us.
Here it is.
Where, what, what's before and what's after?
Okay, there, it's, let's see, four is a very telling of the general fire.
Very terrible end of the general fire.
Yeah.
There it is. Here, I didn't think you gave it to me.
Doubt me?
Yes. So all the others look good. We raised that four thousand. Well, obviously she said, hey, do what you want to, but that's because she didn't tell, right?
She, well, she talked to me about it and I told her that I would just take care of it and I knew what she, long as she would change and that I would take care of it and salaries anyway, so.
Paige, do you think we're good?
Mm-hmm, I don't.
Right? You got any comments?
I've got to pay for it again.
Well, we gotta pay for those alleys.
Not that, not that mobilization, so.
You did get it? Okay. Thank you.
I just hope everybody gets the alleys and the pressure down.
Do you think, do you think we, do you think we need to, uh, do you have an officer that you could lay off and we could use their salaries to pay for it or?
No, no, not really. I would like to have some snowmobiles next year.
You know.
Probably should have put a plow on my budget since we got a plower on the driveway.
Been wanting to get you a derangible, but since you bought the drone, I think I can take that off now.
Yeah, Goodyear's got the, they got.
They got, I didn't see one this year though.
I didn't either. But I usually move it by the track and see it a little bit more, but.
Jordan, do you have any comments?
I think, oh yeah, I used your truck last year to buy my parkway.
So you do have a duty and task there as far as get with the, get with the companies on the turn, protective gear.
For the lease purchase?
Yes. Comments, questions?
No comments, I will stay in touch with the council on the items that we spoke about earlier in the future.
I, I've asked you ten times. I'm, we're gonna keep asking.
Yeah, I mean, I felt like this was a little too easy, but, um.
Oh, you made it easy when you came in and said, hey, I'm, you're not at a quarter of a million dollars short.
I was good after the second time.
There you go. Any comments or questions from the council?
Not yet.
Well, I wanna thank the department heads. I think they came in very conservative this year and heard our message earlier in the year about gonna go on, so congratulations to you guys for doing great job.
I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Motion made and seconded on favor. Hi. Greg Josh for.
Now I gotta go back to my regular job.
Hey, Jazz, always it was a pleasure.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you. I planned a week here all day, so now what am I gonna do?
For tomorrow.
Tell them at work if you do that. Oh, you got to because double hours, right?